So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the September seventh, two thousand twenty-three school committee meeting. This will be our first meeting that is conducted in a hybrid format simultaneously conducted remotely over Zoom as well as in person. Attendance by committee members may be remote and remote attendance of committee members shall count toward the forum. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. This meeting is open to the public. We will take comments from in-person participants at the designated time in the agenda. If we have any, any members of the public who wish to make comments at that time, I'll go over in more detail some of the nuances about public comment for life. Alright, so with that, we can begin. So first item on the agenda is the schedule of attendance. So since the last time we met, a majority of school committee members have signed off on warrants, ten S's and eleven S's. And I believe that Michelle Durant had a commoner question on the warrant signing process.
First, Jen, I just want to make sure I heard you. Ten S's and Sam, eleven S's and Sam?
Yes.
Okay, the sound is cutting in and out. I don't know if it's doing that for Jackie too, but just something to note. So I never saw these warrants and it can, I know that when prior to the system that we were using, Lynn would send out, there was a warrant, we could all review it, we could all sign it, not sign it, ask questions, whatever. And that isn't being, whatever this new system is, whatever the limitations are, that's not happening. And I've brought it up several times since we've switched to that system. And I just find it, I think for our due diligence and because we're responsible for the budget. And with in light of things going on in other districts, that's really important that every one of us get a chance to review, ask questions and sign if we want. Not have it shut off after three people sign or it doesn't go to everybody. I, I don't have them in my email.
Alright, so let's, can we take that as something to address? Is anyone else not getting it offline? I believe, um, or go ahead. Jackie, have you been, have they been going to you? I know I've seen signatures from Nancy, myself, Lauren.
Okay, so it's just. They've come to me.
Have they been, have they come to you recently? Did the last two come to you?
Um, I think one came to me.
Okay, so I think it's a limitation of docket sign. It may be that because the majority of signatures is, is needed. I wonder if this, if the system is set up to, um, after it gets to the third vote process and continue on to the next signers who are not.
Okay.
So something that we can discuss. Okay. Alright, great. Thank you, Michelle, for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
I, I didn't hear the comment that I think somebody made after you, Jen.
Oh, I'm sorry, um. I think it was just Dr. Cabral had confirmed that we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, and I would like the opportunity to review and sign those. I don't know why, but sometimes when I'm talking, the silent, the volume goes mute.
Can you hear, can you hear now, Michelle?
Yes, that I could hear, but it has been cutting in and out.
Okay, we won't, we won't process any warrants without you checking them. So this is the first time I've heard of it, so I will make sure that we check to see that everybody's on it and we'll get it all set for you.
Okay, I have brought it up before though, so I'm glad that we'll revisit it. Thank you.
So Michelle, can you hear me or do you want us to use the microphone?
No, I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. Welcome. Have a seat. So our next item on the agenda is the student representative to the school committee update. So Dr. Cabral. Can everybody hear me okay? Alright, so we are very happy to say that we've had a couple of school committee members working with Principal Kavanaugh from Oliver Ames and a student delegation on having a student representative from Oliver Ames join us at the table. And you can see tonight, we have Marvel here joining us. She is going to be the representative from a group of students that are meeting regularly with school committee representative as well as Principal Kavanaugh. And would you like to speak more to the process? Sure, um, we held elect. Yeah, just in case anybody watching.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Yes, we held elections for B five, uh, member council last spring, of which these five wonderful members are going to collect information about the student experience throughout Oliver Ames and report back to the school committee each week. Marvel, among those five, was voted Marvel Memmer, um, to be the, um, permanent non-voting member of the school committee for this year, which I'm very excited about Marvel. You're gonna do an awesome job. So, um, we were really excited. Student voice is really important to us and to have them here at this level is just, uh, right in line with our own values and, um, our goals as a district. And so Marvel will be reporting out to you guys on a regular basis about, um, the student experience and what's going on in the schools. Is that helpful? Great, thank you.
So Marvel, do you wanna give your first update?
Sure, um, so the beginning of school year has been going pretty good so far. Um, great feedback all around. Um, we started the beginning of school year off with the new student orientation and the freshman orientation together with tours as well. Um, and again, a lot of students in the beginning of the school year were early, even the first day, were vocalizing their appreciation for this because it really helped ease their nerves on the first day of school. Um, and then we had our grade assemblies on the second day of school and the third day of school. Um, and that was also highly praised. Um, a couple of things where the upperclassmen are actually extremely excited for the early college programs and opportunities that are now presented at AWA. Um, and the, um, underclassmen are also excited to kinda get the official kickoff of the school year. Um, and the only concern that was, um, kinda brought up and that Ms. Kavanaugh and I discussed today was kind of the redundancy in assemblies for the upperclassmen because, you know, it's been said in the previous years. But the administration has already been working on that with like feedback forms, um, and generating new ideas for other assemblies. Um, and yeah, great opportunities have started to, you know, blossom through clubs and sports and games. So can't wait to square.
Thank you so much and welcome. We're very happy to have you here.
Thank you.
So next up on the agenda is the approval of minutes. So we have three sets of minutes to approve. The first set is from a regular meeting on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. So do any committee members have any questions, concerns or edits? Seeing none, um, can I get a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes from August seventeen?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes from Thursday, August seventeen.
And can I get a second? Let's do roll call votes since we don't have a full quorum physically in the room. To be on the safe side, we'll have to figure out if that's required. Okay, so roll call vote, uh, let's.
Durant. Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Arias.
Loomis, yes.
And next up are the workshop meeting minutes from August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Do any committee members have questions or comments on those? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes from August twenty? So move Luca. And can I get a second?
Durant, second. Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
And then last up are the executive session, uh, meeting minutes from August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody need the tell for review during exec session? No? Alright, so then, um, I will make a motion to approve and not release the executive session meeting minutes at this time. Can I get a second? Second, Luca. And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Alright, so the boring stuff is over with and now we get to something really exciting, which is, um, we have with us athletes who attended the Calgary World Series. Dr. Cabral. We have some middle school students that were part of a team that traveled to Calgary World Series and we invited them to come here tonight. I think it would be great to hear about, a little bit about their experiences. What I would like to do to make sure that they are appropriately recognized, the way that the cameras are set up, is invite the athletes and coaches to come and line up behind the school committee. And then we will put you on the spot. There's nothing to study for. Literally your name and position and pass the mic on just so we can make sure that you're all recognized. And then if you would like to answer any questions from the school committee, that's entirely optional. So we would ask you to come on up, anybody who's willing, and join us and stand right behind the school committee. Okay. And coaches? Oh, no.
Hi, I'm Stan Chalvier. I'm an assistant coach on the team.
Stain Prescott, pitcher.
Quinn Grothie, outfield.
George Papoutis, centerfield.
Jack Williams, catcher.
Peyton Chan, third base.
Aaron Lawless, third base.
Woodspeth, shortstop.
Jack McManaman, left field.
Ray Shaez, first base.
Adam Exo, second base.
Cameron Chalvier, second base.
Jay McManaman, assistant coach.
Maybe Coach J, if you could tell us how the team fared? And then if anybody of them wanna share their experiences, that would be great.
Sure, um, so the, there were thirty-six total teams, twenty-four from the US and twelve from around the world. We played in a bracket with all the US teams and we finished seventh out of the twenty-four. Two of the teams that we lost to ended up playing in the US championship and one of them ended up winning the whole thing. So it was pretty cool to be on the same field with those kind of players and coaches.
Absolutely. Uh, would anybody like to tell us about your experience, what you thought about it? Quinn?
Quinn? Fine. No, 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 okay.
Tell them how high it was.
It was pretty hot there. Um, it was like a hundred and five when we were at our hotel, but when we were on the turf, it like raised like fifteen degrees. We were playing on like a hundred and twenty degree turf.
So you were fine today?
In school? No. It was pretty fun. Uh, all the other teams were really nice. Yeah, it was a great experience for all of us.
Opportunity to meet other teams from other parts of the.
Yeah, we all traded pins to each other. Yeah, I have all the pins at my house.
Anybody else? George?
Uh, sure. Okay, uh, I thought it was fun and I got to meet a lot of new players from other teams. I'll be you too, well.
Uh, I'll pass all. Uh, it was really fun and I'm glad that we got the opportunity to go. Anybody else?
It was, it was fun meeting the international teams. You gotta take pictures with them, the international teams.
What were some of the international teams?
Went to meet like Taiwan, uh, Japan, Korea and other teams like that.
Uh, it was really fun meeting other teams and just fun overall.
It was pretty fun. The experience was really good. It was fun meeting all other teams.
Were you there until the finals? Oh, someone home, someone stayed.
It was kinda, it was really fun, especially like meeting other people from like different countries.
And how great are your coaches and your parents for supporting you and taking you
I'd, I'd echo everything that, uh, the kids said. It was really a tremendous experience. I think it's a testament to how hard these kids have worked for a long time. Uh, most of them have been playing since they were eight. And competing against each other in the spring and I think really competing against each other and then playing together this summer really contributed to a lot of our success.
Great. We can't wait to cheer for you guys at AWA. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. So, um, before we move on to, um, the next item, does this twenty school committee members have any comments or? Go ahead, Lauren.
I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you for having us. Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Great job.
You're welcome to stay for the meeting.
May I just say one thing? Do you mind? I did, I just know, you know, as a baseball mom myself, I know the amount of, um, support that is necessary from a town in order to accomplish something like this. And as they were walking out, for those of you that are watching at home, um, the, the parents were saying how much the community supported them. And that is a really, a real testament to the town of Easton, um, that the support that they had and the support that they continue to have. So great job, Easton, and congratulations to our, to our team.
Absolutely. Yeah, I know a lot of businesses stepped up to help fund, um, some of the travel expenses, which is something that you obviously can't prepare for. You don't know how far you're gonna go into a tournament and to suddenly have to send an entire team plus, you know, parents, guardians, et cetera, on the road, uh, for an indeterminate amount of time. Very daunting. I know that the business community, a lot of, uh, a lot of members of the community don't need to help offset the financial costs for that, so. Alright, so much quieter in here now. Come back anytime. So next up on the agenda is the vote to approve the Mass General Brigham contract, Dr. Cabral. Thank you. So we had, have been contracting with Marathon for several years now for athletic training services at the high school. Unfortunately, Marathon was unable to secure a trainer for Oliver Ames this year. So we've been working, uh, David Twombly and the A.D. Mary McDonald have been working with Mass General to try to arrange for contracts that would make sure our athletes had the appropriate supervision. Because we wanted to make sure somebody was here at the start of sports, which actually starts in August. We went into a temporary contract, which was per diem contract with MGH. And you have already approved that contract and that has been going on, but MGH now has finally been able to find a person who is able to do it throughout the course of the year. And so this contract reflects that. And David Twombly, Director of Operations is here and he can answer any questions that you might have about this contract. So we actually have two with MGH. One is per diem and then this one is the, the one, two lastest through the year. We are looking perhaps for a more sustainable model. I have sent a survey to my colleagues around the Commonwealth in terms of perhaps having a full-time internal athletic director and I'm putting that information together, human comparables, and we'll see how we might fare with that. It seems like everybody's having this labor shortage issue and this is no different. So the health field and education, I think, were very much affected and we're seeing that in the, the lack of a trainer. So it was unfortunate, but we were able to, um, thanks to the the tenaciousness of David Twombly and Mary and Kelly, we were able to make sure that students were covered all of the time and they were ever since they started.
Yeah, I won't add too much to this, but, um, basically, Leesha pretty much summarized it pretty perfectly. Was kind of a last minute change. As you may remember, we had Marathon Physical Therapy. We had, uh, entered into a contract with them back in May and they notified us, I think, the last week of July that they couldn't fulfill the contract. So we kinda scrambled around. Mary, uh, was really helpful in working with Kelly. So we ended up, uh, sending out an RFQ or a quick RFP over to, uh, Cardinal Healthcare and Signature Healthcare. Unfortunately, Mass General Brigham was the, um, hospital that responded, uh, after protracted, uh, negotiations between Ben Taylor and the Mass General Brigham's, uh, lawyers. We came out with a contract and that's what he, that's what he, what is here today. The, uh, total cost of the contract is sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars and they'll provide athletic training services for the school district, uh, for this year. And I think, uh, not to add one other thing, as Leesha had mentioned, we're gonna look to do more of a long-term. This is only a one-year contract, so maybe in the spring when we get the budget season, we'll have discussions about maybe coming up with a different, uh, scenario for going forward, maybe try to hire our own athletic trainer or do some, something else. But right now, this is a one-year contract.
Do any, uh, school committee members have any questions?
I have a sort of general question about the athletic training, but not necessarily to the contract.
Go ahead.
Is, is the role of the athletic trainer to be at every game of, I, I don't understand how that's physically possible.
They are onsite for all home games. And they do travel to some off-site games, specifically the more physical sports like hockey or football. But not every off-site because it is the responsibility of any home site to have a trainer on premises. Okay. Okay, so if there's multiple games going on at home at once, they just need to be somewhere and that. They're here, they're on a golf cart and they're here and they do go around to the different venues, yes. Cool, that's good to know. Thank you.
Good question.
Thanks. So, um, so David, I had, I had a question that, um, actually Dr. Cabral, um, did answer, but I just wanna get it out publicly in case anybody ever goes back and reviews any of this. Um, so our contract with Marathon had an assumed, um, the, the base rate for that was an assumption of twelve hundred hours. So the base annual rate is based on twelve hundred and then, of course, the same hourly rate was then applied to any access. So for this contract, the base rate, um, assumes thirteen hundred fifty hours. So, uh, so I just wanna make sure that we are actually using, or historically thirteen hundred, at least thirteen hundred fifty hours. Cause through this contract, we're gonna be paying.
Yeah, so basically, uh, after meeting with, uh, Mass General Brigham and Mary's not involved in it, she's a little bit, um, new to this, but she actually brought in some, a different perspective. They decided that we probably needed thirteen hundred and fifty hours, so that's why we increased the hours.
Okay, okay, great. Um, and I'll just point out, again, I, this sounds like it's just a function of, of the market reality of today. This is a twenty-seven percent increase over what we were getting with Marathon. So this is, this is the best we can do though, right? Oh, gosh.
Yeah, we really.
We have blanketed the Commonwealth and Rhode Island. This is it. We were fortunate to get this.
Yeah, we're lucky we have Matt, uh, Mass General that stepped up because we were working the phones, trying to get other, um, hospitals to jump in, but nobody else would do it. So we're really glad that Mass General Brigham jumped up.
Okay, well, it is what it is and. But then. And the rate itself, the hourly rate itself is, is exceedingly reasonable. I was just gonna say that the twelve hundred hours, now it's thirteen hundred fifty hours, so it's not exactly a twenty-seven percent. It is, it is on an hourly. Yeah, it is, if you. If you add to three hundred fifty, okay. We will, we will be there. Yeah. Alright. Okay, um, anybody else have any, oh, go ahead, Michelle.
Um, David, what, what did Mary cite for the need? You said she cited the need for the additional hours. Did she give examples of why?
Uh, she didn't really give examples, but I think she worked with, uh, Mass General and that's what their recommendation was, that in order to cover all those sports, they felt that it would take about thirteen fifty to cover them. So that's why we increased it to thirteen fifty. But you gotta remember, we, when we went out to bid, we actually presented thirteen fifty for hours to Cardinal Healthcare and to Signature, although we didn't get bids on that, you have to be consistent with the hours because you have to compare apples to apples. So it was thirteen fifty was the, was the number.
And I did talk to Mary and in addition to games, we also want the trainer to be there to respond to any complaints that students have, uh, even if they're practicing. They do pre-taping for games. Uh, they do consultations with them. They do recommendations to, uh, healthcare providers. So there, there really is a need for them to be there on many hours. They're here on weekends and evenings and it's a very unusual, uh, work schedule for someone.
My experience working with trainers, they typically put in more hours than they're paid for. Believe me, they, they're one of the hottest workers that you have in any organization, whether it's pro sports, college sports, high school sports. Those guys work a lot of hours.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, uh, would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the Mass General Brigham contract for athletic training services? So move to Luca. Can I get a second?
Durant, second.
Roll call vote.
Durant, yes.
Yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Twombly.
Alright, thank you. I'll stay on for the next item. I think you're talking.
On the agenda is the playground update. Dr. Cabral. Uh, noticeably absent is the court project. Both of these were funded in large part by the Community Preservation Committee. So I just wanna note that even though it's not there, it is going, it is progressing smoothly. And the reason it is there is because it's progressing smoothly. So we have had, all of the concrete has been poured, asphalt is coming in tomorrow. And, um, we are hoping for that project to be finished by around the end of November. It is possible that the permanent lining will not be able to be done because it's very temperature sensitive. But we, uh, do have an opportunity to put some temporary lining there so that they can be used. But everything has to cure for over thirty days and be tested and checked. And so we will have them open as soon as possible. But that is going more smoothly perhaps than, than the playground and so that's why we don't have an update on there. The reason that there is a playground update, update is because we do have some, uh, changes. We did present some public plans and so we wanted to make sure that people were aware of changes and why they were taking place. At town meeting, we had nine percent of the project was, uh, designed to have poured-in-place surfacing. The poured-in-place surfacing was, uh, taken out of the project at town meeting and a very specific language about natural products was, uh, put in and voted on. And so since that time, we've been working to replace the area. The two existing play structures in what we were calling the north and south playground, uh, it would be the playground area between Easton Middle School and Richardson Olmsted and then the one on the other side of Richardson Olmsted closest to this Lothrup Street and Oliver Ames. The two existing play structures had poured-in-place, uh, surfacing there, uh, when they were put in. It had the poured-in-place surface, so that was taken out. Unfortunately, the substitutes that we've found for poured-in-place are not going to work on that space. There's something called, uh, the hick rating, which is a, a head impact rating. And poured-in-place has a hick rating of eight feet, which means that a child could potentially fall eight feet and not suffer from a significant head injury or, um, physical injury. The core keen surfacing is, um, less than that. So unfortunately, the existing structure, because it had poured-in-place, it was able to be there, but now that the poured-in-place is out, we will need to remove those structures. So those are gonna be taken out of the plan. The designers have gone back and we're only working on the north playground right now. So the designers have gone back and they have made a grassy area with a, a concrete path. There're gonna be a couple of trees there and some benches. It's gonna be more quiet area. The south playground, that is. The south playground, that is. Jackie, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry for interrupting. So what are the play structures that were taken out?
The existing play structure is being taken out. And anything that exceeds.
What was, what was that?
Uh, it's a climbing structure. It's there now. It's not taken out yet. Uh, it's a climbing structure that was put in several years ago.
Okay.
The south playground that is actually being designed right now, or the finishing touches are being put on the sign. The initial designs had swings and unfortunately the swings are also too high. And so there are some, we're waiting for the manufacturer to get back to the designer to let us know if. They can perhaps put. Shorter swings in or the, you have to imagine the apex of a swing. And the height that a child can get, that's what the height is going to be. And so if it's anything less, and I can't tell you what the core key is, I just know that it's not eight feet. Uh, it's less than that. I don't know exactly what it is, but. We have to make sure that every structure is shorter than that. The only other option is to put the fiber bark. The problems with the fiber bark are that, first of all, there are child hazard for small children that might use that playground. It's not always going to just be for students in Richardson Olmsted. It's also very difficult to maintain. It can develop mold. And it's not accessible. The designer is thinking about potentially using the fiber bark in order to save the swing sets. Because. The ADA is considering loosening up the requirements. So that they can be considered ADA compatible. But they're not universally acceptable, accessible. And that really has been our goal. So we're not sure if the swings are going to be able to be maintained either. So right now, the existing play structures are taken out. Anything, any client structure that. Someone could get to eight feet are being taken out and we're waiting to hear about the swing sets. Michelle?
So if I'm understanding correctly, potentially. There won't be any kind of structures because of the HICs ratings. And what we're being. What we're needing to use based on that language change. Is that correct?
Um, structures, not any structures with any kind of significant weight to them. Correct. It will be a sort of a, an obstacle course, basketball court areas. Gaga ball areas, which any parents would be familiar with what that is. Those kinds of structures as well as some outdoor seating and some walking paths.
But not necessarily like a climbing structure and potentially not swings.
Correct.
Can I add something, Alicia? We met with Chris Ketchel. On Tuesday morning with the landscape architect. And actually Chris didn't have a problem with losing that play structure on the north playground. It actually is between the middle school and the Richardson school. So it does kind of get noisy over there. So he thought it would be much better having a passive playground in that area. With the, some chairs, some seating and some work areas for the students to go out to. So Chris didn't really have an issue with this. He actually kind of embraced it, to be honest with you. And so now we got to focus on trying to maintain some of those play equipment, some of the play equipment. Over at the south playground once we set that project.
Okay, any comments, some questions? School committee? Well, thank you for that update and you know, thank you to everybody who's been working to. Accommodate the design to the constraints that were voted on at town meeting. You know, it's, it's created a lot of work and they spent a lot of effort. Put into trying to find solutions that can maximize the end results. So. I, I really appreciate all that work. I know that it's, it's been a lot. So. Do the best you can. It will still be.
Add one thing. Yep, if I could add one thing. One of the things we did talk about on Tuesday is, and I think that Alicia has talked about this before. We're working with Traverse Landscaping and they're trying to get the design done earlier for the south playground. So we're possibly going to go out to bid in November, December, which should be early. And then we would possibly do the construction in March, which would give us the leg up on a lot of other. MSBA projects and other projects that are going on in school districts. So we're really excited about that, about getting our design documents done earlier, maybe in September, beginning of October. Going out to bid in November, December, getting those bids back and then having a contractor onsite in March. So that's kind of an exciting thing to get the project underway and not lose any time and possibly keep the same contractor. Who's doing the north playground, who's doing a pretty good job. Thanks.
Um. Mr. Tom, Tombley. So since we're adding. The greenery areas, the grass. Is, will that have to go by the two, two full seasons of growing seasons like the yields?
That's a really good question. Actually, we didn't talk about that, to be honest with you. But I can find out and get back to you on that. But that's an excellent question too. Hopefully, I think it's a small area, so I would assume it wouldn't, but let me find that out. That's a really good question.
Okay, and my other question is. So at Blanche Ames. There is climbing structures. So is. It will be. Forget it. I can't figure out how to word it. So I'm, I take it back.
You can send an email afterwards and just ask.
Someday it will come to me.
Whatever it is.
Well, opening email.
Yeah, I will. All right.
Okay, great. Anything else on the playground update? Thank you. So next item on the agenda is a vote to appoint the school committee representative to the review committee for the youth health survey. Dr. Cabral?
Sure. So every two years, our students at the middle school and the high school grid setup participate in a youth health survey. It's something that is done across the Commonwealth and has given us some very. Very useful data in terms of programming for the needs of our students and working with partners such as. Eastern Wings of Hope and the YMCA to bring some important information, educational information to our students and our parents about. Risky youth behavior. Here this evening is the Director of Special Services, Craig Davidson, to talk about how we are working on that process this year. And refining the questions for the survey, which will be going out toward the end of December of this winter. Davidson?
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. The anonymous survey is conducted grade six through twelve and contains health status questions. In addition to questions about risky behavior, protective factors. The YHS Review Committee will meet this fall and review the recommended questions for the 2023 survey. Kendall Bennett from the Old Colony YMCA and Kelly Reed, also from the Old Colony YMCA and Wings of Hope. Have put together a presentation of questions that have been added and removed from the previous surveys. The review committee will decide if there are any recommended questions that should be removed. And/or if there are questions we should look to add. The review committee consists of Oliver Ames and East and Middle School parents, nurses, counselors, teachers and administrators. Tonight, we are looking for a school committee representative to be a member of the review committee for the school year.
Um, do any committee members have questions before we solicit volunteers?
When would this committee be meeting?
We are looking at meeting at the beginning of October. It'll be a survey sent out. To the committee from previous school years and there are three options for dates as of right now.
What time of day are you considering those meetings?
We took into consideration the teacher's schedules and some parent's schedules. We're looking to hold the meetings at three o'clock.
How many meetings do you think there'll be?
Hopefully one, but we will have to work through that process if there needs to be additional time.
Is there an option to remote in at three o'clock?
Of course, technology allows us some great opportunities these days. So we'll make sure there's an opportunity for. Some of the staff and/or school committee members or parents to zoom in.
Do you have an estimate of how long you think that meeting might be? Like if somebody joined ten or fifteen minutes late?
Of course. So we were lucky enough that Ms. Bennett, Ms. Reed put together a great presentation for our staff. To be able to really break down the questions that have been added and removed. So we are looking to hopefully hold the meeting for no more than two hours to review the questions.
Thank you.
So any other questions? So, um, is, is anybody available and interested? Lawrence, interested? Anybody else? Interested?
I'm definitely interested. I would have to join a little bit late and I would have to do it remote because I would still be in Rhode Island at that time.
And Nancy or Jackie? Review of an interest? Okay. Um, let's see. So, and do you only need one school committee member? Can we have two?
We can have two as long as we don't have a quorum.
Um, would both of you want to participate and you know, you know, I have some. Thoughts. I'm sure I can relay them to either one of you and that you can represent any thoughts that other school committee members have. So I'm confident that anybody who does have any feedback can be represented by one or both of you. So either one of you, any objection to both of you being on that committee?
I don't. I said, nobody else tells.
All right, great. Well, then thank you both for volunteering. So I will make a motion then to appoint. Michelle Durant and Lauren Loomis to represent the school committee on the review committee for the youth health survey. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
And roll call though.
Durant, yes.
Yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Sorry, yes. Loomis, yes. I do have one question. I have received a question from a member of the public, a parent. On how to become involved. So has that been communicated yet? And folks recruited or is that in process?
So what we're going to do is decide on what the date is. Then we're going to reach out to the middle school and high school parents. We're going to look for two to four representatives from each building. It'll be first come, first served to be on the committee. So a Google invite will go, or a Google form will go out to our families. And the first two to four from each school will be appointed to be part of the membership.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is a vote to appoint a school committee representative to the security project building team. Dr. Cabral?
At town meeting and also through the support of Senator Timothy, we receive funds to do some security upgrades at our schools. We are going to have a committee that is going to. Be updated regularly and oversee the development of that work. And we asked the municipal building committee to appoint someone and they appointed Nancy DeLuca. To represent the municipal building committee on this. In this group. So you can either have Mrs. DeLuca be the representative. Or you can have a strictly school committee member as a representative, but the fact that she's in both groups is, is convenient.
It's. Security just sounds like the most interesting. So do, how, any idea of how often this committee is going to be meeting? It's going to be a while.
It's probably, it's going, we are going to be meeting weekly.
I think the duration.
But we're not really talking about how long it is or what the details are.
Okay. Right. The reps. So, yep, all right. So weekly. Um, and our meeting is expected to be in the normal, you know, business hours in the evening.
That I'm not sure about. The building committee that we had for Blanche Ames was on Wednesdays at two o'clock. So it's really the building, the actual designers and the team that's doing the work that does these updates. We certainly can convey updates in executive session to the whole school committee. But it will really be up to them when they're holding it and I don't think they usually have those at night. It's not like the school planning committee of the building project. It's more of a check in. Committee that we had on Wednesdays throughout the. Construction of Blanche Ames.
Okay. Great. So are any school committee, committee members interested in representing the school committee? Exclusively, or are we comfortable with having Nancy represent us via her role on the municipal building committee? And I don't have a preference really either way. Nobody chomping at the bit to add a weekly meeting to their schedule?
I'm definitely not interested. I mean, I do, I kind of like. I don't know. I think it's kind of. Nice to have a representative from each group, but I totally trust Nancy if she wants to. Play both roles.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'm totally confident with Nancy's on both roles as well.
Thanks. The interest, are you overextended already?
Lauren is. Oh dear.
Um, just, the option is there if you are interested, but if, if it's, if we're good with Nancy, then.
I'm definitely good with Nancy. I mean, I am interested, but I'm definitely good with Nancy.
Okay. All right. So why don't we then have Nancy represent? So I'll make a motion, have Nancy be our representative. Can you get a second?
Durant, second.
And roll call though.
Durant, yes.
Yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So next upon the agenda is the discussion of student absences and excuses policy five G H. This is our first. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So any suggested changes are on the first page. We did have the assistant principals in the district work on this project. Throughout last year to try to be more clear about absences. From pre-k through twelve. It's important everywhere that. We are recording absences, parties and dismissals accurately. But there are implications at different levels that are not consistent in the district. For example, there are some courses at the high school that can be affected, credit bearing courses that can be affected if the attendance is too high. That's not the same at the other schools.
Too low.
Too low. And that's not the same at the other schools. So this language is to hopefully. Help us communicate that a little better to people, but also to make sure that the system we're using in our Aspen system. Is going to be, we're going to be changing the designation of how we're naming an absence. Instead of just a straight absence, we've got this, these three subsections now. So other than, excuse me, other than adding legal guardians wherever it says parents. And adding designee to the principal, principal or designee. And changing pronouns to they. The only, other than that, the only change is in the second paragraph. And that is adding some clarification about what it means to be absent. And that is in blue on your copy. It says, an absence excused A E. I have extra copies here. You don't have one? We don't have it. We don't have the blue copy. An absent excuse A E is considered when official documentation is provided, such as a doctor's note or religious observance or a bereavement. An absent A is considered when no notification or documentation of reason or reason of absence. Is provided to the school. And lastly, absent notify A N. Is considered when a parent or legal guardian notifies the school of the student's absence, but no documentation is provided. There are a few reasons that we need to disaggregate this data. First of all, it's how we report to the Department of Education. There is a difference. We were actually reporting students on field trips as absent also, we realized. And the Department of Education considers that an absence from school. It doesn't realize that it's school business. So we just have to be more mindful about. So we just have to be more mindful about how we're putting things into our system. Absence excuse means that we have legal documentation and there should be a copy attached in our digital system. The absent or with no notification is also very important because there's something called, it used to be called a child in need of services. And now it's a CRA, which is reporting when a student may have, may either be missing too much school or may be held out of school. Or there might be other, some other factor where we really need to make sure that the student is okay, that they're being supported properly at home, that they have proper transportation to school, that they're healthy, that they're doing well, that they're safe. And so we need to be able to parcel out when we're getting no notification at all about the student being absent. We also have a one-call system that will actually call the, the emergency numbers that we have if a student is absent with no documentation so that the parent can be notified. Then there's the third situation where a parent notifies us that a child is absent. And in very rare instances, we do, but too many unfortunately, we do have instances where a parent will sign a student out of school. And unfortunately, based on the regulations of Massachusetts, student is not in school for the required amount of time. And so we need to work with the parents to find out what is causing them to be absent from school and how can we support either the family or the student to make sure that they're able to get back into school. We have to report to the Department of Education anytime or we, we have to report and follow up with students anytime a student is absent for 10% of the time they're in school. So if we're in school for, for 30 days, if a student is out for three days, we just, we need to be mindful that they're out for that amount of time and pay attention to it. In 180-day school year, a student really is not supposed to be out more than 18 times. They need to have some sort of proper documentation so that we can make sure that our reporting is accurate, that they were unfortunately hospitalized or it was a combination of college visits or some other documented evidence that we can provide to make sure that the student is able to get credit for their courses, but also to make sure that they're meeting the minimum regulations or required time in school for Massachusetts regulation.
So do any committee members have any questions or comments? I definitely do, but I need to go. Want to go ahead, Lauren?
What, what qualifies a legal documentation for a religious observance or a bereavement?
So it would be on a religious, an observed religious day. And there is, it could be just a note from a parent, but it has to be on an observed religious day.
Sure. So I have a couple of things. I compare this against the MASC policy. Their website actually has, has two different versions. And one of them looks a little bit more outdated than the other. So the one, there is one, if you go to the policy reference manual that contains some of the updates that I would like us to consider adopting. So the first is that in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, the first two sentences and the word accordingly are eliminated from the MASC policy. So I'll read those. "The student's understanding of the importance of day-to-day schoolwork is an important factor in the shaping of their character. Parents or legal guardians can help their children by not allowing them to miss school needlessly. Accordingly, parents or legal guardians will provide a written explanation, et cetera." I'm uncomfortable with the attendance policy including the character of students due to absence. I just, school attendance is certainly important, but I just think that comes across as unnecessarily judgmental. I, I'm not, I don't, I'm okay with the second sentence. "The parents or legal guardians can help their children by not allowing them to miss school needlessly." I, I think that's fine. The MASC policy does eliminate that.
So on that first sentence, do you want to say, "A student's understanding of the importance of day-to-day schoolwork is important," period?
Maybe, or even just strike the sentence.
Okay.
So hoping, you know, curious to hear feedback on that. And then the MASC policy removes completely the clause between principal and designee, which we're adding, and just reads each principal or designee not by whatever title he slash they may be known. And I think in our, given that in our district, every school is headed by a principal, I don't think we need that by whatever title. It's not language that I see anywhere else typically in our policies. Jackie and Nancy though certainly defer to you on that since you are painfully familiar with all of the language.
Policy queens.
That's right. So I would suggest just, just striking those clauses and having each of those paragraphs read which principal or just.
The one you said about by whatever title they may be known, that, that's fine. I would say that's fine to get rid of. I'm still on that first one though. "Student's understanding of the importance of day-to-day schoolwork is an important factor in the shaping of their character." I get that. But do you think, maybe it should be a parent and, or guardian and student need to know that coming to school every day is important? I don't know that they feel like it's important sometimes. I don't know.
So the first sentence is that regular and punctual school attendance is essential for success at school?
Yeah.
Do you think that kind of covers it?
Sure.
Okay. So, so my suggestion would be then again to accept the language in blue in the first, the second paragraph. Accept the additions of legal guardians. But to strike the first two sentences and the word accordingly in that fourth paragraph and just start that with, "Parents or legal guardians will provide a written explanation for the absence or targeting of a child." This will be required.
Strike the first.
Just first sentence.
What's that?
Just the first sentence.
The first, the first sentence? And then do we need the parents or legal guardians can help their children by not allowing them to miss school needlessly? We can keep that if, if folks.
That's important to your policy.
Yeah.
I just heard you say, strike the first one. If you want to get the second one, strike and we just need to.
Oh, okay. You're saying the first, the first two and then accordingly. So started at parents or legal guardians. Yes. Sorry, I was unclear. Yep. Yeah. So I would, I would strike in the fourth paragraph, the first two sentences in their entirety, the word accordingly and begin it with parents. And that would align with the MASC model policy change.
And once you put the updated date on here, if it's voted on at the second reading, this is one less policy.
There you go. File J. We love file J, don't we, Jackie?
So any other comments or feedback on this? Or are we ready to set this aside and then we can vote on it in the minutes meeting? Have our second meeting vote?
Thank you, Jim.
Hey, can I just add one thing? I just, I just noticed that or legal guardians was not on the second line down on the first paragraph. So if we just want to include that, it says parents. We say, the committee recognize that parents or legal guardians.
Yes.
We can just insert that there as well.
Yes, thank you. And. Watch this recording. I'm happy to send those notes in writing. All right. So next on the agenda is about to change the date of the September 21st, 2023 school committee. The meeting calendar is in our packet. Dr. Cabral, you want to tee this up or do you want me to just explain?
That's fine. We were contacted by Principal Chavnon who has, for some reason, the high school events were not on the district calendar that is on our website. So we've rectified that situation. But in the process of doing that, we did realize that the back to school night for the parents at Oliver Ames is on September 21st and there is a school committee meeting. So while it's probably not a conflict for audience members, it would definitely be a bit more difficult to have the school committee meeting at this school. You could change the location, but then that would be different, difficult for the technology aspect of it. Or we could change the date. Because the school actually runs through a mock schedule. So the bells are ringing and announcements are rolling off so that the parents can travel to each of their students' classes. And we thought that that might be very disruptive to the meeting.
Thank you. So, so I guess our options would be to change the date of the meeting. Or I guess we could, we could opt to do it fully remote. And that would eliminate the issue of being in a building where bells are going off every few minutes. So personally, I would like to attend back to school. But, you know, I know that we have other conflicts with back to school nights at other schools with them meeting times. So I don't want to put my preference ahead. So I'm just wondering.
What are some options? As you said, there's a lot of back to school nights in September. What are some options of dates that we have for here, September 21st?
I have Thursdays here.
Well, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a Thursday either, but other, like, okay. So I mean, we could do it the 28th, but then we have a meeting the 5th, which is fine. I mean, it's not going to matter.
EMS back to school night is that night?
The 28th. What about the 14th?
But that's not here.
True.
14th is R.O. 24, you got to connect it.
But we don't want anyone to miss our meetings either. See, we have a full house. I don't, whatever. Whatever you girls would like to do, it's fine.
How, where there is, it's a lot. I think there's, tonight there's something at Land James and I didn't hear to be back then. People said. R.O.
That was going to be my comment too, but I think they should look at the school committee meeting schedule and find out when it is and then place their activities not on our day, but that's fine.
Yeah, I know that the, so R.O.'s there, grade three. Okay.
September is a very tough month with all, because they do this. One of the things here in Easton that they do, which I really appreciate, is the open houses or back to school nights, grade specific each night. So that does cause more events at the schools throughout the, for each night. But it is a benefit so that not all 700 students or the parents are in the building, actually times two or three or whoever attends are in the building at the same time.
So looking at the week of, of the 18th. So it looks like Wednesday, the 20th. The only thing I'm seeing on the district calendars that Land James has a packet. But I'm not seeing a back to school night at any of the schools. So Wednesday, the 20th perhaps. So just moving this up one day if, if committee members are available. And then Tuesday that week, there's, Tuesday's R.O.'s, grade five nights. Monday, it's the R.O. They've got the PTA and school council. So again, those are smaller events. So that Monday, the 18th, doesn't look like it has big district events at the schools. So thoughts from committee members on if another night that week works?
Monday, the 18th does not work for me.
It's also Russia.
Oh, right. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew it was something.
You're right.
20th, I think, could work if you want.
I'm, I'm not available the 20th, but if that works for everyone else, then that's, that's fine.
I don't know that I'll be available the 20th either, but you would still have three.
Yeah, let's look at that. The following, it looks like the middle school has their back to school nights, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So Monday, the 20, Mondays don't come for. That's, we need to be mindful of that. Yes, that next week looks, looks a little tough. Yeah, so I see. Well, yeah, we have it in the calendar. It's covering 15, 16, 17. 15 through the 19th.
What time is back to school night, Jen, on the 21st?
Back to school night is from 6:00 to 8:00. Really be right, right in the sake of our meeting for those bells going off.
Yeah, no, I know. I was just thinking if we did a virtual at 5:00 and had a light agenda, but it would have to be done by 6:00 and that's.
We could do that and I could hand off to you if you would be available to stay on longer. We wanted to keep it on the 21st and go virtual.
That is totally up to you. I, I can, I will be there on the 21st so we have that meeting. But whatever you'd like to do.
Well, committee members think?
Well, you would like to participate. I understand that. And if we start early and do a Zoom meeting, that sounds great.
Jackie, what do you think?
I think that could work.
So September 22nd.
It's, we'll start, we'll do 5:00 P.M. We'll go back to Zoom. Sorry, Nancy.
Okay. I, I can handle this.
I can sit in here with a computer.
No.
Just kidding.
Thankfully, Michelle will do a wonderful job taking back the baton.
And virtual. I'll never be in that seat.
All right. Okay. All right. All right. So we need to move on that, right? Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion to change the date? It'd be September 21st, 2023 school committee meeting, sorry. To change the time and location of September 21st, 2023 school committee meeting, 5:00 P.M. views.
I'll make a motion to change the school committee meeting on September 21st to virtual and to be held at 5:00 o'clock.
Can I get a second?
Wiseman, second.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
And next up is public comment. We have one guest present. Would you like to make a public comment?
Jack, the 25th, Sabre Street. I have a couple of questions and a comment. I'm sure all you mean is a calendarized already, but aren't you mandated that? Meetings every other week? It sounds like you're trying to squeeze two meetings so close together. Do you have to have this?
We do not. So our cadence though has, we found that the twice a month works in terms of keeping up with all the business.
It seems like September is not the time. I think that's probably the only one that will happen. So that might be something.
Yeah, that's, that's a great consideration. Thank you.
The other one, how are you going to handle, when you have a gallery here? How are you going to handle questions from the gallery at the time of the, you know, the topic or public comment?
So we have, we've updated our public, our public comment policy. And during a meeting, when we do have public comment, I typically will read some of the key points of that. So it will be that each member of the public who wishes to make, who wishes to make a comment will have a time of three minutes. And there are some other, other pointers that we'll share. If you have to, you know, the, the comments should be related to what is within the purview of the school committee, et cetera. So there has been, in Massachusetts, there was a case at a select board meeting in another town a few years ago that went to court that helped a lot of public bodies clarify and refine your public comment policy. So we have done that accordingly. And so that would end a, in a meeting when we have, you know, a general public there for comments. And you're a very experienced viewer of our, of our meetings. We will explain all of that.
I referenced that after this. I have to reference that, which is, um, sometimes their absence is in the way to parents vacations. How are they, are they noted in a different way? Uh, they haven't seemed, it happens on long weekends or even holidays. Are they noted in differently?
If a parent, if a parent, uh, provides a call or a note, then it's A and absent notified regardless of the reason.
And the last thing. Trainer. If the trainer is not on campus, are they allowed to have events like football or hockey?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
If the trainer is not present on campus.
You mean they're absent or?
Say there's no trainer present.
We need to have a trainer present.
If there is no non-present here, do they still have the sporting event?
Only if, so we, on occasion, we will have, uh, paramedics here from Easton. But, uh, we have an athletic trainer at every event. And if someone isn't here, we get a replacement for them. But we sometimes have a, a paramedic in addition.
I'm more concerned not here, but when your teams are playing away.
Yes.
How do, how do they help us accountable for?
They have to have, well, it's MIAA rules. So they need to, in order to hold the contest, uh, they can have an athletic trainer or they can have the paramedics present.
And just the last comment that I have, if you are going to have, uh, meetings where the presenters or board members are hybrid, it might be beneficial, I have a monitor up here. So anybody in the gallery, when can you show up and see?
We can ask the cat about that, I think. That's a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you for your feedback. Yes, I think during our testing, we'd actually, we had tested with having
The screen on.
projection there and it creates.
Got kick offside.
Right, yeah. So dead on, it creates this infinity mirror effect. But I think, as you mentioned, I think something on the side.
You'll show a lot of people attended when you have that infinity.
Yeah. Very dizzying to look at. It was very cool. Right. Uh, next up is superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Uh, first of all, the openings have gone very well. The traffic is amazing. We were hoping that when we were able to open our access roads, we would see a big difference and we have. There has been, uh, no backup on Spooner Street or Lothrup Avenue. People are utilizing both of our new pass-through roads, if you will, or, or paper roads. I'm not sure if we're ever going to actually name them, not sure. But at this point, they are using the cues that their designers intended and the traffic engineers intended. And it has been going extremely smoothly. The elementary school, which traditionally has the slowest arrival and departure because you've got littles getting on cars. A lot of times they need a staff member to assist them with seatbelts or a parent will get out and get them out of car. Our dismissal at Blanche James is down to between 10 and 12 minutes each day. So that's remarkable on the part of the staff. It's really putting in the effort to make that happen as smoothly as possible. And all of the cooperative parents that are helping us to do that. So we're very pleased to see that we do have a difference now that the access roads are open. Um, and we, we are having a lot more free flowing. Now, with that said, all of the roads on campus, we are able to control direction and, um, volume. So you will see, perhaps, we may have some changing signs or changing directions. Right now, it does seem to be going really smoothly, however. So we're going to leave it as it is for a bit and see if that changes. We do have some cones across what is intended to be the emergency entrance on Lothrup Street. So people may see that that is blocked off, that is intended to stay blocked off. There are some gates there that we're eventually going to have closed. And, uh, that has, was always intended for emergency use. We just made use of it when our access roads were not completed at the end of last year. And so that is going to be, uh, closed, continue to be closed to, to traffic coming in. Other than that, we typically do have some overcrowded buses at the beginning of every school year. Typically, students do not start activities until second, third, fourth week of school. And so we generally see a lot less of them on the buses. We have, never know how many students are going to show up for the buses. And so it's very difficult to gauge, even if we have assessed it in the past, parents changed the minds at the last minute. And, uh, it's not, uh, very, uh, it's not a very reliable process. So what we do is we check the ridership and we have people counting students on a bus. We did have one bus that had too many students on it, uh, bus 13, which serves just the middle school and the high school. So what we did is add an additional bus. We are using one of the buses from Southeastern Regional Vocational School just in the morning because the afternoon's a little lighter as students stay after school. And that is going to run until the ridership goes down a bit and we're able to get all the students on, on one bus. And it's the only major issue we ran into that we are aware of. We were able to mitigate that literally the, the next day. I think that's it for transportation. And then obviously things were, are very hot this week. And so we sent out guidance to all the schools and the athletic director to make sure that we don't have students or staff doing any, um, exerting activities. We are more concerned with getting through the school day safely. Students, especially at the younger grades, are still learning routines and how to do things in the classroom. And so it's, it's not like we're missing, um, major exams or, or midterms or getting ready for MCATs or anything like that. And so we really just encourage everybody to, if they're in a room, all, every room in every building is a little bit different. And so we need the individual staff members to let us know when something is exceedingly hot. And if it is, we invite them or encourage them and sometimes tell them to move to other spaces, either within the building or outdoors. Uh, it's fine if they're modifying their lessons or doing alternative activities. The goal is really to get through the day safely. It's not really to, um, maybe stick to a lesson plan that can't be done without technology or, or without equipment in their room. It's more important to keep everybody safe and as comfortable as possible. And so, um, we plan on having a full day tomorrow as well. And then we are monitoring the weather and seeing that we're going to have cold front coming in, which will make things a bit cooler as soon as next week. And we're happy to hear that. We usually have one week at the beginning of school and one week at the end of school. That's tough. This is extraordinary, but we do have requirements for time on learning. There is, uh, heat guidance that came from the commissioner of education in 2021. And, uh, it was to really make sure that we were able to get our time on learning in. Otherwise, we have to make up the day at the end of the year. And unfortunately, the way that the, our June months have been going, sometimes it's just as tricky with heat then. So it's really just a goal of getting through tomorrow, like we did today, making sure that parents are dressing their children based on the weather, make sure they're comfortable loose clothing, light, light, light colored clothing. And we have the bottle filling stations around all of the schools. And we encourage frequent hydration and minimizing or eliminating any physical activities. Blanche James and Richardson Olmstead, for example, had all recess, recess indoors today. And of course, we are also monitoring the, um, surface temperature of the turf field. That's done regularly by the athletic director. We have special instrumentation that measures that and keeps students off of that turf field if it is too hot. So we're really paying attention to it and, um, doubling up on classes in air-conditioned spaces, things like that. But we need everybody to exercise good judgment. If a student has a significant issue with heat and a parent feels safer that they should remain at home, then of course we always respect a parent's choice, just like on a snow day, if a particular parent feels that their situation is unique and their child, um, isn't able to go to school, that is parental choice. And, uh, our staff members are always ready to make sure that they're caught up on their schoolwork when they return. But we're expecting things to cool off literally and figuratively next week. And we're really looking forward to that. That's all I have right now.
So next up, assistant superintendent notes.
Believe it or not, I don't have much for you this evening. We've, since our last meeting, we've really been focused on opening school. Um, it has been wonderful to walk around the schools and see all the schools occupied with our staff and our students. Um, you know, there is a famous book, as I'm sure you all know, by Robert Fogum, um, Fogum. All I Really Need to Know, I Learned in Kindergarten, while I had a wonderful lesson today, uh, by a kindergartner named Elijah, who taught me how to build a, uh, uh, taught me how to build a building that he was creating. Um, I was having difficulty putting some of the pieces together and he sat right next to me. He said, oh, I need a chair. And he pulled the chair up next to me and showed me how to build, um, what he was building. Uh, we have, you know, just wonderful opportunities, uh, for learning in our classrooms already happening and already going on. Our new literacy program, um, kindergarten through grade seven is underway. We started with module zero, uh, and, and I was in the middle school today and one of the sixth grade teachers was excited to show me, this is his second year teaching it, as he was one of the pilot teachers about implementation and how much smoother it is the second time around. Um, but he, you know, and it was, what was wonderful was I was able to ask the students who had experienced piloting the program. And many of the students raised their hands. Um, and so there, the, the energy is really great around the new program. So we are very excited about that. Um, and I'm not going to get into more. We have, I, at our next meeting, I will share with you our professional development schedule, um, for our October professional development date. Um, that is being planned out as we speak, um, with a, with a huge focus and huge emphasis on curriculum. Especially for our, our teachers that are, that are working on the new literacy program. Um, but other than that, that's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions.
All right. So next up are school committee notes. Um, let's see, so Michelle, do you have any updates?
Um, yes, a couple. Um, I'm just a reminder that Tiger Rama is coming up with the music department on October 21st. And that'll be, I believe, an all-day event at the fields. Um, the marching band will be hosting, uh, area marching bands for a big competition and food trucks. And it'll be, um, it'll be a lot of fun. The first tempo meeting is coming up and, um, they're encouraging people to attend. It is on September 14th, the seven o'clock, and it involves all the music programs from K to 12. So there's lots of opportunities to, um, learn about what's going on and get involved in that. As far as HRC, we have not, we have a meeting, I believe, next week, but I have reached out to Carol's um, about attending one of our meetings. I believe that she is an attendee tonight. And I believe that she will be attending the November 7th HRC meeting and just kind of opening up those conversations or partnerships. And so we're really excited about that. Um, and then I do have a weather-related question for Dr. Cabral or a couple of them. The first one's about water fountains or hydrating stations. Do all the schools have them and do we know that they are all operational?
Yes, they have them. And yes, they're all operational. When we lost power today, we lost two at EMS, but we put signs on them to direct students to the ones that were working.
Okay. And, um, as far as outdoor recess or gym class or anything like that. So during these heat day days today and tomorrow, are we as a district encouraging t- uh, teachers to not take people outside in this weather?
Uh, it depends. If there are areas outside in the shade that are cooler, we are telling them they should go there. But we are not telling them to go outside, like recess at Blanche James and Richardson Olmstead, for example, today were mandated to be indoors.
So for instance, I, I mean, you hear a lot, and so I'm asking about that. But I was witnessing at a, you know, midday, kids out playing on the heart, the hot top, like the, the pavement. And it was 95 degrees out and that was a little concerning to me.
They're monitored for the amount of time that they're out there and, and what they're doing. Um, and they're not out there for an entire period. That was PE for them to get a little bit of exercise.
All right. As a teacher and somebody who's been dealing with that in my, our own schools, I just find it concerning that we have kids out in that heat. I just want that on the record. That's all I have.
Thanks, Michelle. Nancy?
Okay. First of all, on Sunday, this Sunday, right? The 10th?
Yes.
Okay. Seven o'clock PM at the Temple Chai Shalom on Depot Street. A presentation of the Democratic and Republican Town Committees about the proposed police fire and DPW facilities replacement project will be held. So everybody is invited to that. The special town meeting with the presentation of the, uh, police fire DPW project. Uh, that special town meeting is October 23rd. And I don't know what day the voting is. I tried to, I thought I had it written down, but I didn't. So there is a vote. So it's the meeting and the vote, um, to accept this new project. But you can find any of this information in the Town of Easton website. You can see all of the meetings, the presentation made at the select board, uh, the other day. So a lot of interesting information from Connor. Welcome everybody back to school. Sorry it's so hot, but this happens every year. I don't know if it was this, today was really hot. Today was bad. Um, and good luck to all the, of the kids doing their studies and the teens going and the music people, everybody. And I'm, I have to say, because I was, I'm a big proponent of this meeting in person. It was nice walking through high school today and seeing the kids' artwork again. And just being here with people is great. So please come to our school committee meetings, not the next one, because we're going to be on Zoom. But, uh, the one after that, which is, um, October, uh, 5th. So please join us. We'd love to have you here at the Simmons Lecture Hall.
Thank you, Nancy. Welcome. Jackie, any updates this week?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Lauren, the updates this week?
Um. Um, so nothing really that hasn't been mentioned, actually.
Everyone stole your thunder.
Everyone stole my thunder.
Great. Okay. And Marvel, I know you are our, our newest, uh, member and you gave your update at the top of the meeting. Um, as typically how you do, being respectful of the fact that there's some nights you're going to have to exit. But, um, if you, as we get to this portion of the meeting, if you have anything additional that you ever want to share or chime in on, feel, you know, feel free to do so. So I'll give you the opportunity tonight. I know, putting you on the spot.
I don't think I do. Thank you.
All right. And then, um, I think, yeah, I think lots have been covered already. So, um, just welcome back. It was really great to, um, be at the first day for staff last week and then the week before that to, um, attend the orientation for new staff. So, uh, that both of those days, uh, are, I think, exceptionally welcoming and really helps set the tone for getting, uh, getting all of our, our faculty and staff excited to be back in the building and starting the new school year. It's just always, um, we appreciate being included in those. Those are nice events. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to get to talk to staff and welcome them back. So, um, and everybody, you know, it's been really great to hear, uh, a lot of positivity. Uh, I'm, I'm seeing it in my house, actually, not to mortify my one kid left in these schools. It's kind of a good start to the year. All right. So, um, with that. My word, I don't really know, make sure. So I will, I'd like to make a motion to ex, to enter into executive session to return to open session. Um, let's see, so this is the reasons pursuant to MGL, chapter 38, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for SPDA, which is the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Secretary of Clerical, Custodian, um, and Eastern Educators, EDA stipends and Food Servicing A and Unit A. and Eastern Educators, EDA stipends, and Food Servicing A and Unit A Focus Block memorandum of. And again, a second. Okay, in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position. Second, DeLuca and Ropalvo?
I have a question before I vote. Do we have a link for this?
I will create one. I'm creating one right now.
Thank you. Stentorant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Okay, alright, so we will return to open session in a little bit.
Oh, I feel like my mitts all dropped.
Oh my goodness, I lost in here.
Sweater.
Did she go tell Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Starving.
Mine just feels like I'm going to bed.
Only eight o'clock.
I know, please sit and get up at five.
Oh.
What's up?
Joe, are we ready?
Thank you.
Let's look at Michelle's second question. She's very annoying.
Oh, yep, she's right here, let me move her.
Jackie, can you hear us? Can you give her the thumbs up?
Thank you.
And Charlie can hear us, excellent, okay.
No.
Great, so welcome back everybody, our last item on the agenda for tonight is the vote to approve the Southeastern Public Employees Association Secretarial Clerical Contract. Right, so can I get a motion to, I'll make a motion to vote to approve SPEA Secretary of Clerical Contract. Can I get a second?
Second.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion to vote, a motion to approve the SPEA Custodian Contract. Can I get a second?
Durant, second.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Yes.
Star, yes?
Louis, yes.
So that brings us to the end of the meeting, our next meeting will be on September 21st, 5pm, very soon. And so, somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move to Luca.
Second?
Durant, second.
Roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
All right, great, thank you everybody.